All right, good evening, everyone. I'm gonna call this city council listening session meeting to order. Thanks, everybody, for being here. We got a bunch of folks who had signed up beforehand, so we might be parsing out some minutes here. The first, Matthew. Okay, hold on one second. So Matthew, and I see Sally, Natalie, and then the two other names, I have Becky and Jen.
And Becky.
Becky and Jen, and looking to speak or, okay. So Becky and Jen, what we're gonna do typically, because when there's an item on the agenda, we generally don't do it here at the, at the listening session also. We, we give it a little bit more deference if it's not a public hearing or that kind of thing. So what I'd like to do is get to these four first, and maybe we'll give all four of these, we'll give everybody five minutes, and then maybe the last, or five or six minutes, and the last couple of minutes, if we could turn it over to you, if we could do that. Does that make sense? Okay. So why don't we do that, why don't we, as I do my quick math here, why don't we limit everybody to like six minutes, and then we'll, we'll take this as well. So Matthew, come on forward.
That's right.
Nope, can come forward, sit up here, we'll need you to sign in officially, and...
Sign in officially here.
And I think this math explained the format to you. It's a kind of a conversational back and forth, give and take kind of thing, but thanks for being here, your first time in front of us, good to see you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Finish here in just a second.
Thanks.
Just to get going here, so I'm gonna be very, very quick here. Mine's kind of an old thing, but it's kind of for something that ever happens in the future here. And so what happened is, is that during the pandemic, I rent a property in Bloomington here, and then during the pandemic, I was in the process of an eviction for some people, okay? When I went through the eviction, I was literally on the 28th of November, whatever, wait, no, I'm sorry, the 28th of March, I was gonna go in for my eviction case, which ended the whole thing, 13th, the governor shuts everything down. But he doesn't just shut it down, he shuts it down, okay? Like, nobody could do anything. So in the meantime, what happened is, is that I had to wait throughout that time, well, in the summer came, they were supposed to mow the lawn, they didn't mow the lawn, I get a notice from you guys. I get that, I totally get that, you know? But what I did is, I was trying to find an attorney. No attorney would handle it, because it was literally shut down. We can't do anything, can't handle it, we won't do it. I couldn't get on the property to mow the lawn after the notice. The police said, "We're not here to watch you mow your lawn," okay? And anybody I sent over or did anything, they were booting them out of there. The sheriff is not gonna help, the police are not gonna help, and the government is shut down. In the meantime, on...
So, just a minute, everybody you sent over there, they weren't able to...
They would call the police on it. The police said, "We're not here to deal with this, we're not here to, if you want them off, but you can't allow them on there." In, in the state of Minnesota, if you're the renter, that's your property until some violation, that's just the way it is.
Okay.
So the point is, is that there's nothing I could do about it. They sent me the notice, I said, "Don't go over there, don't mow this lawn." People, they said, "Nope, that's the rules, that's what we gotta do, we have to mow your lawn." I said, "Don't, I'm trying to find an attorney on this thing." Everything I explained there, I'm explaining to you. Finally, they just said, "Well, we're gonna go mow the lawn." I told my neighbors to go over there, you know, when the call, when they do that, tell them to stop. Nope, they were in and out, because of course, for 275 bucks, they do it in about 40 seconds, you know? They didn't do that, and I was very clear about that. I kind of expected that my city would have just bent a few rules. I mean, after all, we bent every other rule here, didn't we, during the pandemic? Somebody could've said, "You know what? Tim Sassy, who worked in the building over here, he just lives next door to him. Why don't we just see if his neighbors will sign something to say, 'Is that lawn okay?'" Because they all knew my circumstance. And so I'm like, "You can't do this." So then, when it finally comes, I said, "I'm not gonna pay this bill." I told them not to do it. Well, it came around on my taxes, of course, you know? And then I said, "You had a hearing for this, which I missed, and Lynn Moore," I went and talked to her, and she goes, "That's, you still gotta pay." Well, she's the person I would appeal to. And so I'm just kind of sitting there going, "This is a small town that I'm supposed to be..." This is the smallest form of government, except for my ex-wife, which is, which is a form of government. But the point was, is that this is the place I should be able to appeal to, and we should be able to work out some, especially during a time when everybody's bending the rules, and we all know that the landlord's got the shaft. They had to pay for absolutely everything, all the way on down the row, especially the small guy. And just to get them out, by the way, I went in under Order 2079, which is the governor's order to get another family member in, that cost me $15,000 to get through the governor's order. Otherwise, I would've still had them in there all the way up to June. So I think that somebody could've just said, "Let's just..." I even called the mayor. Before it was ever cut, I called the mayor and said, "Could you do something about this?" And I never even, you know, I talked to him that day on his personal line, never heard back, nothing like that, and I got my lawn mowed.
But we talked. I'm the mayor, yes.
Yeah, yeah, I didn't know your face or anything like that. Yeah, you remember we talked?
I do remember we talked.
That was before they mowed it.
And, and I did talk with environmental health, I expressed your concerns and everything else, and obviously, we don't have any, I don't, you'd be shocked at how little power I actually have as mayor. And they went forward, following their, their administrative rules and, and...
Did that cause you, aside from the $275, which I totally understand, did, did that cause you, did it cause you challenges as it relates to the eviction process then? Because technically, somebody had trespassed on the renter's property, like, was that also a problem?
Well, I mean, all of this was brought up there. The, the problem is, is that when it came to the eviction, they had ended up getting a free attorney. Of course, I have to pay for mine. And the end result was, is that her attorney's saying, "You don't wanna bring up any problems. Let's just see if we can get through." First, they were trying to get through, if it's, you know, they don't need to be evicted, and it's like, "Nope, your lease is done, I've, I'm not, non-renewal." And then, of course, under 2079, having a family member move in, or the need to have a family member move in, got me in. I was probably the first person who ever moved somebody through that system, and there was no precedent to go against, because the governor left on in 2079. So...
So you mentioned the, the appeal process that we have, and I think that was the first step in appeal.
Right, and, and I should've done that, but to be honest with you, I thought it was just another bill, and I'm going, "I'm not paying this bill." But the, the other point was, is that this would've been the person I would've appealed to, and she already said it. "No way, you should've had somebody else go on the property to..." I had every opportunity. I don't think anybody ever realizes how well we've got it in the U.S., and realize that other countries just take away what you have, until you've been a landlord here and realize that the government just said, "You don't have any more rights."
And now you've got one more step in this process, right? There's, I believe, our administrative law judge, is that how it works? I'm trying to remember.
Supposedly Lynn said that this was the end of it. And I've already paid the taxes, you know?
Would've been previous years.
Okay, okay.
That's okay.
Did you have something to...
Just a quick question.
Quickly here.
On these issues, we do, the city council has a public hearing on, on those, right?
Yep.
And I, I understand that you missed it, but we do try, at least, to provide that opportunity, and I feel you, I'm a landlord in the city as well.
And thank you for telling me that, because now I know another step or avenue to do that with.
Yeah.
You know, and I'm hoping not to have a problem again.
When we make the public notices about the assessments, that's an opportunity, and we actually had, this past time, we had two, two people come and, and request appeals based on their, their, or at least questions, answers, and things like that, so hopefully, yeah.
I, by the way, now know how to evict somebody. You know, I don't even have to get an attorney.
An odd thing to be an expert at.
Cost me $15,000, but there you go.
And guess what, you can't evict them 30 days, it has to be 30 days before the first. I learned that one.
Right, yup. But it, it still didn't matter, it was just, it was the governor's world that had to go through. I just kind of expected somebody to say, "This is kind of an oddball thing, can we do something about it?" And it was like, "Nope, we're gonna hold to the hard, fast rule."
Yeah.
And, and again, had you...
Any hard, fast rule during the pandemic?
Had you been to that appeal process, it might've, you know, we could've had the discussion.
I know, I know, and I'm sorry, I would just...
All right.
Thank you for letting us know.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right.
Sorry.
I'm gonna just fill this over here.
Right. Sally, come on up.
Another card that you...
Well, thanks. There you go, Sally. Thank you, thank you.
Yeah.
October 3rd, Listening Session, Councilmember Nelson comments, "It was not my recollection that we gave the park to the facility. Remove the requirement for them to build their own park, it's a completely different thing in my mind, we did not give that to them, that's inaccurate information that you provided." It is not inaccurate information. At the city council meeting September 10th, 2018, the former mayor states, rough transcription, "I agree with some of the speakers this evening, that maybe they putting in a playground might be something that would be overkill, or really unnecessary. I think the school utilizing the playground and the park would be just fine, would work just fine. Maybe times when some of the neighborhood people want to use it at the same time, but to interact and use it with the recess kids. That is giving the playground to the private business Success Academy and doing so without a permit, requirement, or conditions for use. The staff report dated August 8th, 2018 states, 'A significant and typical aspect of a school is that recreational activities be provided for the students. There is no playground equipment other than the equipment located in Smith Park. While there are several public schools that are adjacent to a public park, all have playground facilities dedicated to the school and do not rely solely on a public park for playground equipment. If the increase to 130 students is approved by the city council, staff recommends that a dedicated playground be provided by the applicants on the property for the students.' Success Academy relied on the public park, planning required Success Academy to provide their own playground, and council removed the requirement, giving the private business Success Academy the public Smith Park playground. September 2019, city council meeting, attorney Frost asked the city when the school uses the playground, and the city answered "any time," confirming that the city gave the private business Success Academy the Smith Park playground. In October, de..."
Just to clarify, Sally, a charter school is not a private business, it's a public school in the state of Minnesota.
It's a...
We've had this discussion before, Sally, it's been asked and answered, we've had this discussion before. A charter school is considered a public school in the state of Minnesota.
Private business.
No, it is not. It is a public school in the state of Minnesota. It has been, and that's, that...
It's a private business, if it was going to file, if it was going to file bankruptcy, how would it file bankruptcy?
It is a public school under the law in the state of Minnesota.
It offers a public education, but it's a private business.
It is a public school under the law in the state of Minnesota.
It offers a public education. So again, if they were to file, if they were to file for bankruptcy, what would they file?
I have no idea.
Chapter 11, TESA.
By the legal definition.
The legal, the legal definition needs to be addressed, and, and does the...
And we can't deal with that here.
But for you to understand, if, if Success Academy, if any charter school is to file bankruptcy, it would be Chapter 11. TESA filed bankruptcy, it was a charter school, they filed bankruptcy, Chapter 11. If our public municipality, our district was to file bankruptcy, I forget what it is, the same thing as a government.
Changes whether or not it's a public school.
It, it's a private business, we have...
It's a public school.
Right, yeah, and there are other nonprofits that offer government, public, things that...
I don't see what we disagree here, I think we should move on. Because they, the line is...
No, a private business, it's in...
It's a public school, it's both.
No, no, it's, it's a private business that offers an education to the public, it's a really important distinction for people to know, because we, as a city, should not be funding or giving them a play...
Sally, I'm gonna...
I have read that.
Statute 1...
I've read that statute.
03, applicable law subdivision 1.
Yeah.
Status exemption from statutes and rules. A charter school is a public school, and is part of the state's system of public education.
Yeah, but it's still a private business.
And be, Sally.
It's still, and I am, I'm, I have contacted the government to get that written, so it's clear, so that, you know, our council members would know that we are not responsible for it anymore than we're responsible for any other private business.
Is a public school publicly funded?
Yes.
Okay. A, a separate park was, a playground was built there, was that funded by the county?
Uh, yes.
So taxpayer money funded two playgrounds at the same location, or in near proximity to, to, in the, in near proximity to each other. So taxpayers had to build two playgrounds near each other because of this complaint.
And see, it's just important, why I'm gonna continue with this, is because of that sentiment, is because you're negative to me, because I have a public park in my neighborhood that I...
And we didn't give it away, but we did not give it, Sally.
Because...
Do we still own the park?
Yes, we do.
Yes, we do.
So...
Didn't give it away then?
Yeah, because if I'm going there with my...
So we let kids use a park, what is the problem?
And that's, again, the sentiment, why I will be continuing to come back until you understand how, how important this is.
It's so important that kids use a park, and yet we paid for a separate park.
And so you didn't hear what I was saying last week, where we've got, we have government entities saying that you don't put preschool children at the park with school-aged children. I mean, you, if you, if you're running a school, you can't have your fifth and sixth graders playing on the playground with your first and second graders, but we can have the public, I can have my preschool children playing with fifth and sixth graders?
All right, Sally, I'm... Built two parks, taxpayers should pay, have two parks.
Oh, the taxpayers, they got a grant, I think, for $20,000, they fundraised for the rest.
From Hennepin County.
Right, yeah, why Hennepin County?
For two parks, so that you don't have that conflict.
So that preschools can...
Continue this next week.
At the public...
Councilmember, Allison, Sally, thank you, thank you.
Sure, where's your name?
Sally. Good evening, welcome.
Don't you say my name?
Why don't you, for the record, just to be sure.
Sure, I'm Natalie Maroos, and I'm here to ask that you leave YouTube commenting on during your councils.
Pretty straightforward.
I would say it twice to use my time. My? Because I think it would be a nice way for the public to engage, I think it'd be a nice way to learn more about the topics. I think it'd be an opportunity for clarification of that.
Expect somebody to answer all of the comments.
Say, is it moderated?
That would be, it wouldn't have to be moderated, it wouldn't have to be... Let me, let me answer your question. It wouldn't have to be moderated, it could just be open to the public, there's a lot of organizations that do that, and they don't have, as an organization, they don't always reply. And you could even put a notice on saying, you know, "Here's how you contact the council. You can email us, you can call us, you can come to listening session."
Said that you wanted to learn, and you wanted to have your questions answered, and you wanted more clarity, right? But I don't understand how that would happen.
Because I learn a lot from my fellow residents.
But that's not always facts.
A lot of times, it's much more factual, yes.
You have to moderate it.
So...
Not necessarily.
Sean.
Thank you. Did we previously allow that, and then change it to not allow it, or have we never allowed it, or what's the situation?
Can you catch a sentence mention?
Mayor members, I'm not sure whether we have allowed comments during live council meetings on YouTube. I know that there was discussion about, we always, you know, periodically are talking about comments on social media, and we have a policy on it, because it's all guarded, regulated by the First Amendment, and so we periodically discuss it. I don't know what the current status of it is, though.
In, in the past, there were, when I first started paying closer attention, when I was learning what was happening to Valley View Park, there were meetings that I, we could comment on during the meetings. And there were quite a few times where I'd say, "Well, what does this mean, what does this mean?" There were residents that clarified it. I mean, our City of Valley View Park group is still up, and those are the people that can answer the questions, and we have people like Sally who deal in facts, she really does, and I don't know what the reason would be not to have the comments on.
Was it recent, were they recently turned off on a meeting?
During a meeting, they are not on.
They are not on now, they were, so they were previously, and you're saying they are not...
There was a meeting that I tuned into when I first started paying closer attention.
Okay.
That it had, where you could comment on during...
Do you not think our public city council meetings have ever had comments on?
Okay, that, that's...
That's not the same...
I'm not sure which meeting, I'm not sure which meeting.
It might've been a session meeting.
Yeah, probably.
It could've been, I don't know what meeting, but...
Okay, that's what I was trying, thanks, that's what I was trying...
So, I'm here to ask that you leave YouTube comments on for your city council meetings.
And then to council member, Cutter's question about moderation, you think they, should they be moderated at all, or...
I think that could be up to you. I know there are some things where you can just say, "We're not gonna moderate," and just let people, if they really wanna know something from the council, they can contact you.
I don't think it's knowing from the council. Remember our conversation at my town hall forum?
What?
Right afterward, when we talked?
Right.
When you asked, you suggested that I not repeat the questions, the offensive questions that had been asked.
No, I asked that you do. Oh, wait, now let me think.
Just don't ask those questions.
No, 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 I said not to worry about it, because people can see through it.
That, that's not how I'm recalling it, Natalie, I think you, you suggested I not ask those questions.
No.
And answer those...
Because my point was, people know which questions aren't, which questions are just to stir the pot. When I ran for, for school board, there were a lot of things posted about me, I'm not gonna go and clarify it, the truth is there, if people wanna find it, they can. If they don't want to, they don't have to. If someone writes a question, and it's, well, if it's vulgar, then I wouldn't repeat that. If it's something totally crazy, just move on. It doesn't mean that you have to explain it and answer it, you can just say what it is and reply to it, and people understand.
I don't know that they do. Councilmember?
I, where you're coming from, my concern about having comments in the city council meeting, while other people are watching that, is that there's some type of implied back and forth with the council, or that that is some type of public forum, as opposed to what it is.
Yeah, and that's why you could make it very clear that it isn't.
And, so that, that would be my concern with it, I, I'd need more information on what exactly that, how that works, but I do think, in general, there are, are a number of forums for people to exchange their thoughts on what we're doing.
I watched a debate just last week, and they had commenting on, and it was extremely helpful, I think, for everyone. And the debate, I mean, so clearly, you have two sides going against each other, that's why it's a debate. So the comments, of course, were back and forth, but you could tell that people, some people really do ask answer, or ask questions, some people just try to stir the pot, and I think you realize who those people are in time. So I think it would be very nice if YouTube comments were left on for your city council meetings.
Thank you.
Turned on.
Turned, turned on, they're not on.
I don't know, I don't know if you have to click them off, or if you have to click them on, but yes.
But the point is, they were never...
I would like them to be, I would like them to be on.
So I just wanted...
Okay, quick one.
Just so I'm clear, why do you want the comments on, just so I understand what...
I think it'd be a nice way for the public to engage.
Thank you. All right, thanks much. I'm next?
Want me next?
Yes, please.
I'll come up next.
How are you?
Hi.
Hi.
Kevin Heinand.
Kevin, good to see you.
Good to see ya. I'm here to talk to you guys tonight about, I don't know how many letter I've received from the city, got one today, and this city, well, let me, let me go with a little bit of history, I've lived in Bloomington since 1969, I've owned my own house since 33 years in Bloomington. Within the first three months that I've had my house, I received notices from the city of Bloomington constantly. First one was about a car in my backyard, and it just kinda goes on and on and on with what's going on. This recent letter I just got today in the mail was about me driving my work truck home. My work truck is my commercial vehicle that I drive, but it's only licensed as a commercial vehicle because of what I carry on that truck.
How big is the truck, was it a box truck?
Ford 450, which it is no different, with the exception, what the city supervisors drive home, they live in Bloomington, but it's not a four-door, and it doesn't have a box on it, it's a flat in the back. It's a new truck, it doesn't look bad, it's not an eyesore whatsoever. That's what it looks like sitting in my driveway. It's not a bad truck, it's a good truck. I started driving this truck home just, oh, probably a month and a half, two months ago, and the reason was, is because converters keep getting stolen off of it at my place of business. My place of business is on the corner of 94th and James, just straight down from the police department. $5,500 a crack each time, and it's, nothing's being done about it.
They just passed an ordinance.
I know about the ordinance, but we can't afford it, it's a lot of money.
Are you able to, like, secure the vehicle at your property, your home property, is that why?
No, we can't, it, it sits outside, there's no cameras.
Okay.
The building owner just did install...
I think she's asking at home.
At home?
Are you able, are you...
At home?
Driving at home now.
I drive at home.
Secure it better.
There's a camera pointing right at it.
Yeah, yeah, gotcha.
And the light's on, so there's...
A lot of likelihood it'll get stolen.
Likelihood, it's gone all day long, until I get home at nighttime. So basically, you're seeing this truck at night, if any time.
So somebody must be complaining.
Somebody's, well, I've had, I have one complainer that has been complaining about me since I've owned the house, because I've already contacted Chief of Police about this, the new Chief of Police.
Sean, question?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Just one, I do know that commercial vehicles in our code are not allowed there.
Some, yup, yup.
Frankly, I have an issue with that, and I brought this up publicly before.
Right.
Because my business is remodeling, I know a ton of tradespeople, and they utilize their vehicle, and they drive it home, and things like that.
Right.
I do personally think it's something to take a look at.
Right.
Not only, I mean, I, I feel pretty bad, a catalytic converter stolen from our office, and it, and of course, they cut it in the wrong spot, so it was even...
You wanna, you wanna hear how bad this is with the getting stolen? We actually bought the cable system that wraps around a converter.
Yeah.
They took it also, went right around it. But, you know, this is, this is just one issue, you know, like I said, for 33 years, I've been getting letters, and I could, I'll go back a couple of them, back here. Recently, I was doing some remodeling on my house, pulled the numbers off the house to do the, the work on it. Two days later, I got a notice, "You don't have numbers on your house." I said, "Like, come on, you gotta be kidding, I'm doing work." Back in 2017, we had curbs and gutters put in. Uh, some of the workers on my back fence pulled pickets down, pulled part of the fence down. And they can't, they contacted me. They said, don't worry about it, not a problem because I'm going to be replacing the whole fence, which I did eventually. But the city still sent me a letter on it, even though it was the city hired employees that did this. I mean, the, the point comes down, it's basically 33 years of harassment. It's just like, come on, you got to be kidding. And you know, if you want to go technical on the whole thing, back in 2017, when they did do our curb and gutters, I have a sprinkler system that was marked up, but yet the city still tore it up. Behind my house, I have, my telephone line and cable line are buried lines, still torn up to this day. And there's a cutoff pole where there's a hole in my backyard about yea deep that you got to watch out when you're mowing so you don't trip through it. My cable service sucks at home. It's always broken up.
So Kevin, I'm going to cut you off here. I'm, I think we have the issue of whether or not we need to look into the parking work trucks at home. But we're, I'm going to try and get to a couple of other-
All right.
Is that coming from environmental health?
Yes, it is. And I can probably tell you who it's coming from also because he's been the guy that's been complaining for 33 years. And when I moved into my house, the lady out there next door, she said, you're going to get complaints from this guy because you like old cars.
All right, thanks, Kevin.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Becky and Jen, we don't have a lot of time here. If you want to flip a coin and who could come forward, get a couple of minutes, just give us the gist of what you're, you're going to talk about here. That'd be great. Perfect.
I didn't realize this was so interactive, so I have like a prepared statement. Do I need to sign in afterwards?
Catch up.
Yeah, you can do it after.
Okay. All right. Mayor and council member?
Just make sure we get your name on the, on the official record. So just say-
My name is Becky Jerkis.
Perfect, thank you, Becky.